Hearing is completed. Planning Commissioners will deliberate and render their decision. Planning Commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's request are required to recuse themselves. The members of the Planning Commission are Anne Clemmons, myself, Reg Van Toth, Frank Cook, Buddy Hardwick, Cruz Reeves, Reginald Hawkins, Reggie Dunn, James Reed, and Leslie Stone. The members of the Land Use Staff are Tommy Tyson, James Sinner, and Javon Hines. Members and petitioners are requested to please speak directly into the microphone. The minutes are recorded for legal purposes, and this is the only way to accurately pick up audio. Tonight, we have six members present, and it takes five votes to pass a motion. Because of the number of board members present, if you would like to delay your request, please let us know when your request is announced. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Any comments on the minutes from last month? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, Mr. Tyson, please read the first agenda item.
First item is presented by James Bennett on behalf of BTOPs Landscaping Inc. It's a request to rezone a parcel of land containing 2.579 acres on the north side of Alabama River Parkway, 700 feet east of Lower Wataunka Road, from R-65S to B2.
Go ahead.
I'm James Bennett. And I'm requesting, I want to do a, my landscaping office, I want to eventually build on the land, wanted to kind of get it rezoned from residential to commercial.
Will you store your, will you store your equipment on that, in that area?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the commission? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
You gotta come to the mic.
This, this is BTOPs Landscaping to rezone a plat from R-65 to a B2 commercial zoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, next item is presented by Flowers and White Engineering for T Investments LLC. It's a request for preliminary approval of County Downs subdivision preliminary plat on the east side of Paddock Lane, R-75S District.
Hey, good evening. I'm Kenneth White with Flowers and White Engineering, representing T Investments LLC. The map you have in front of you is roughly of 85 acres north of County Downs subdivision and south of Fox Hollow. You know, there's a, this is zoned R-75S, and we've proposed a preliminary plat, various street networks that adheres to the subdivision regulations and adheres to the zoning ordinance, currently adopted zoning ordinance of R-75. There are several stubout streets without the development from Fox Hollow and from County Downs that we've connected our preliminary plat from. You know, they were, the way that it's laid out from Fox Hollow, the street names are on both subdivisions, so we assume the connection is required, is also required in the subdivision regulation. So, that's what we've proposed. I can entertain any questions should y'all have any.
These, these are gonna be phased?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. I have a map here. Well, you know, approximately 50 lots per phase. We're gonna start on the west side of the property and kind of develop eastward. So, about where...
Oh, is this a clicker?
So, about right there is a phase line for Phase 1, and then, then we're gonna build this right here in Phase 2, and then Phase 3 is in that area here, and then Phase 4 is here, and then the remaining phase is the easternmost section of the property. So, it's five phases.
So, in Phase 1, the only street connected is Christian?
Yeah, Christian, the Christian Road and then Paddock Lane, right there at the roundabout. Yeah, right there, Christian, in Phase 1, it'll be that connection there, and obviously that connection right there.
Oh, I got you, okay.
And then we'll stub, you know, we'll stub out, you know, right there for future connection for Phase 2.
That area between Citation and Triple Crown, what is that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Reeves, I didn't, I didn't get your question.
Between Citation and Triple Crown, that area?
Between Citation...
Is that, is that an old pond there, or?
Oh, yeah, if we continue to have, that's, that's correct, right, right in this area, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, that's currently a low area kind of retention, there's also a pond outlet structure already there, so we will, we will probably improve that retention a little bit when we get to that phase.
So, those lots will have that big a backyard?
Well, that's correct. The lot lines will go in the middle, it'll be a wet pond, so, you know, but that's exactly right, it'll be a, it'll be a retention, really that tension will, you know, from Phase 1 and 2 will drain to that area, pretty much from, I'm sure Phase 5, pretty much from 1, 2, and, and 3 and 4 will drain into that detention pond.
But the detention for the whole site, the whole 244 will be that?
We'll, we'll have some temporary detention as we develop, but when we get to that area...
In the phases?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, there's a kind of a low area, you know, kind of in this area, it's right here, and the drainage goes that direction now. This was, you know, currently is a preliminary plat approved, and, you know, there's sewer that runs through the site here, the sewer that runs right here, it goes this way, and then the sewer that runs this right here, and there's also sewer that runs here, so it's, it was meant to, you know, for, for continuation.
Will the construction traffic, will that interfere with, with the people going to work and going to school every morning?
Mr. Reeves, you know, in, in starting a project, you will have some mobilization to get some heavy equipment there, but once it's there, it's there until the end of the project, and then it gets removed out, so I don't foresee any kind of problem, you know, the main act, you know, I guess in Phase 1, you still would access the main County Downs Boulevard, but, you know, then look, mobilization of the heavy equipment, then leaving here, there shouldn't be any other impacts for traffic leaving. And good thing about County Downs is you can go, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, you got north, and you got through Bellhurst to the west, and you get Perry Hill Road, so there's numerous access points as well.
Are these, is the developer gonna sell these to a, like a builder, or are they gonna try to sell them individually? How are they talking about doing that?
Jeremy, you wanna mention?
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from the developer.
This is Jeremy Dickinson.
I'm sorry?
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Dickinson, I'm with T Investments, a developer, and basically our intention is to sign an agreement with a home builder, we've yet to sign that, have an agreement put in place, but we would like to, you know, have a home builder that we can, you know, use to develop this out, and like KJ was saying, we're looking at, you know, say 50 lots per year, you're looking at, you know, if homes sell, depending on market conditions, you're looking at about a, you know, five-year type window, could be longer just depending on, you know, like I say, market conditions.
So, you're looking at a 20-year project? I mean, no, I mean, I'm not trying to be cute, I'm just, I'm just saying based on...
It would be, it would be a five-year project's what we're anticipating, about 50 lots per year.
Yeah.
Since these are gonna be 75-foot lots, what, what dimension is the adjacent lots?
I think they're, I think, you know, the whole property is zoned R-75, I believe the adjacent properties are 85, is that right, Tanya? 85 to 90s?
It's between 85 and 90.
Yeah, I think that's right, 85 to 90s. There may be some larger homes on corner lots and stuff like, but I think that they're, is that right, Tanya? I don't wanna say, speak incorrectly.
I didn't look at that, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So, you're downsizing the neighborhood?
Well, again, the whole property, including existing, is R-75, so, you know, they adhere to the subdivision, you know, in zoning regs, just like we do, but, but they, they can build, you know, 75 and higher.
Wait, wait a minute, so, so what you just said, they're gonna do what?
So, the existing County Downs subdivision is zoned R-75.
Right.
What we're proposing is R-75, so, so as long as the lots are 75-foot in width and greater, it adheres to the zoning regulations.
I still can't understand.
As long as it's 75 or greater, it adheres to the...
As long as the width of the lot, Mr. Hardwick, is, is wider than 70, 75 and greater, 75, 80, 85, that it adheres to the zoning ordinance.
Oh, okay, so, but, but all of these lots, with the exception maybe of your corners, are 75?
No, sir. I think the existing lots are, are greater than 75, I think they're probably 85 and 90s.
No, I'm talking about your, your...
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Talking about your, your, your plat there, that, that we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
The, the largest lots, with the exception, if I look correctly, some of the corners.
Yeah, I guess the smallest lots on our proposed developments are 75-foot wide.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, that's right.
But you have some more that are how, how big?
Well, the corner lots, obviously, because you have increased setbacks and stuff like, and, and some of the cul-de-sacs lots, but everything that you see on here is at the building line 75 foot in width. Yes, they, we can't, you know, that's why we adhere to the zoning ordinance.
And Jerry, just for idification, for lack of a better, a better statement, you know, usually, one of the things that we'd like to see is that you sit down and you talk with the, the owners, okay? Have y'all done that? Have y'all tried to explain to them what you, what you're trying to do?
Well...
In fairness, let, let him...
I spoke with, County Downs has a voluntary HOA.
Yes, sir.
And I spoke with the vice president Monday, and I explained to him the project.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, as far as, you know, Fox Hollow, I don't have a, you know, individual person I can, you know, really contact.
Well, let me ask you this, would you, would you be interested, or would you consider? There's a lot of people here, you see that, okay? They got a lot of questions, there's a lot of probably rumors going around that aren't correct, and, you know, this is just a suggestion to you, it's not something you got, you got to do, but it seems to me like you kind of owe it to yourself, and you kind of owe it to the neighborhood, to at least sit down and give them an explanation of how this came about, what your goal is to try to sell, and how, don't you think that would be a smart thing to do?
I wouldn't be opposed to sitting down, and I really would need some help on trying to, you know, how do you organize a meeting, as far as the number of residents and who to reach out to? I've got one contact with County Downs, and I met another gentleman before the meeting.
Yeah.
As far as Fox Hollow, you know, I don't know if we include Bellhurst, or I just don't, you know...
You know, if I were you, and I have been you, okay? I have been in your place, okay?
Right.
What I'd be, all I'd be interested in is who wants to come, can come, I mean, I, but that's your business. But just, you know, you can stop, I rode through Fox Hollow today, and I have to admit, it's been a long time since I had really, really been in it, and it's, that is a beautiful, not that County Downs isn't, it, it is, but it's just a well-kept neighborhood, and a lot of, a lot of, it, it shows a lot of pride, and I think, you know, if you look at, there's a lot of folks here, and, you know, I've been to a lot of meetings in 13 years, and I think this is probably the largest representation that I, that I've seen, and I just, I'm just making a personal suggestion to you, that I think I would take a little time, and I would highly recommend it, that you at least take that under advisement, and maybe you make, you be the one to make that decision, say, "Yeah, I think it might be a good idea."
I mean, that, that's fine with me, you know, I can...
We'll work out, we'll work out who you gotta talk to, fair enough?
Yes, sir, that would be great.
Are you willing to put this off until next, next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, and I'm gonna ask this, if it's okay, I'm gonna, yes, sir.
When they get to speaking, I'm gonna educate you, so. I'm the member who met with them before we talked today.
Sir, I'm sorry, come, get up and give your name and, and address and all.
My name is Richard Dean, and I'm a resident of County Downs.
Yes, sir.
I got here, first of all, I tried to call Mr. White today, admittedly this afternoon, and left a message, he didn't call me back because he was busy. I got here 30 minutes early to talk to these two gentlemen, I told them we had a whole bunch of folks coming here, I asked them if they'd be willing to put this off a month to talk to us. No, we want to go forward tonight. I've got a lot of good arguments, but the first thing I was gonna do was ask you to continue it, because we've got a lot of concerns, and we just found out about it, we had a meeting two nights ago.
Sir, when you're winning, you better, you better, you better, you better listen to what's going on, okay? I mean, you get, you carrying this thing out where, where, you know, we, we had it where you wanted it, but you gonna keep talking till, till you don't get it.
I, I want to tell you one more thing, because I did a little homework before I came in here, where's that little red pointer? Is this that pointer? Show me how that works. I ain't that smart.
Might be asking the wrong person.
That's okay, let me, I, I wanna, I just want you to know something before we come back next time, right here, these lots right here, you got, my hand's moving, you got County Downs lots right here, you got the new subdivision right here, right here from that red lot to right there, that's a little stretch of County Downs between Christian and the roundabout, there's 10 lots on the County Downs side, there's 13 lots on the new side, they do not match up. There's a lot of other concerns we have, so when we come back, maybe we can voice that, but maybe we can work something out.
Jerry...
The whole search...
I think he's trying to get you to, to meet and voice that before you come back.
Correct, correct. We have lot restrictions, I mean, the, the R-75 is great, but most of these lots in County Downs are 90, 100, 110 feet, we've measured them, the home restrictions are 2,400 feet in some places, 2,400 square feet, there's nothing here that restricts the home size. So, we have concerns, but I don't want to air that out tonight if we're gonna come back, I'd like to ask the commission to put it off, that's the first thing I was gonna do, and it sounds like Mr. Hardwick has beat me to it, so, thank you very much for all your concerns, and I will say this, about three or four years ago, they were gonna build a church down there on Atlanta Highway, and they came to the residents ahead of time, we had a bunch of meaningful discussions, and we defeated that church, maybe have something to do with why they didn't come to us, because the same owners that own this property are the marshals, and so, I'll be back if nobody else will be in a month, I think it's November 18th according to your agenda, but thank you very much for expressing all your concerns.
Jerry, could I ask you one more question? What is the size, square footage that you intend to try to build on these, these lots?
I don't have, you know, home plans or anything like that, because I don't have a builder...
I know you don't at this point.
If I had to guess, you know, you're looking at, you know, I would say probably in, on average, probably right around 2,250 square feet, plus minus, which, you know, is what you're looking at.
Yeah, okay, well, first of all, I thank you, I thank you for, for being man enough to stand up here and, 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 and say that, okay? So...
You know, obviously all plats require a public forum, does this constitute the public forum that we've had today's meeting?
Well, everybody's not gotten up and spoken yet.
Okay, so that, that's what, that's what we...
I can't understand what you're saying, I'm sorry.
My question was, you know, require, all plats require a public forum, so, you know, but Tanya answered my question, so, um, okay.
I do want to add, just in response to your question, I think there were like 17 different platted sections of County Downs, and there were minimum deed restrictions on some of those plats, I'm living on one that had a minimum deed restriction, of course, most folks have a lot bigger than 75, and also have houses bigger than the minimum, but there's been a lot of rumors going around about 2,400 minimum, and this minimum, and that minimum, but these guys tonight said, "No, there's no minimums, we'd like a minimum on the plat, that way there's required to be a minimum when you build your house."
Sir.
And we'd also, this is for later, but, you know, the lot sizes ain't a lot in County Downs 75 feet, there are 75, but there ain't no R-7, there ain't no 75-foot lots, and what you said is exactly what I compared and looked at these lots, it's gonna cripple our neighborhood and the home values, so that'll all be in November when we come back.
No, 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 that would be when you have the meeting with him, you would discuss that kind of stuff when you have the meeting with him. We're not gonna decide whether it's...
You're correct.
Yeah, yeah, so, so you guys get together afterwards and discuss date, phone numbers, that type stuff, and then have the meeting, and then you'll come back to us, and then you come back to us in November, and hopefully everything will have been worked out.
Yes, sir.
Who, who do you want Jerry to?
Jeremy.
Jeremy, I'm, Jeremy, I'm sorry, I can't hear anything, this, this is the worst sound system I've ever, this is awful, y'all. What, who, who it needs to be the man that walks out with, with Jeremy right today, tonight, to make the arrangements for a meeting? Who?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Well, let me tell you, I'd be glad to give them my name and number, and Adam Donaldson's our president, and we got a lot of good folks, Listen Edens is here tonight, he's a realtor, he's been meeting with us and talking to us, we got all kind of folks, now, I don't mean to have 500 people from County Downs and these two guys, but I, I offered tonight, you know, I'll coordinate a meeting with a small group, and I'll exchange phone numbers before we leave, there won't be any lack of communication on, on our end.
But, but, but you gotta keep in mind, there's more than one neighborhood, there's more than one neighborhood, so everybody need to meet at the same time, or, or at the very minimum have representatives there. I see somebody over there.
Alright, Ed, you wanna set it? You wanna be the, you wanna be the lead pony in the thing? Alright, alright, Ed, the councilman, that's even better, that's even better.
Yes, yes, every neighborhood should be represented at the meeting, every neighborhood.
Let me add this, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of all these neighbors, I think you got some Fox Hollow, Bellhurst, and County Downs folks, because it's kind of like one contiguous area on Atlanta Highway, so I'm not just talking about County Downs.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think y'all ought to be, all the three ought to be involved.
Okay, so we're set.
Buddy, I'm, I'm gonna review something, you know, I got your voicemail at 4:30, I apologize I didn't call you back, but you said I was busy, I was, but I didn't get it till 30 minutes before getting here, so I would've called you back, but you can send you what I didn't, because I was too busy, I just wanna make sure that's of record, but I also want to make sure of this, is, when we laid this out, and we could talk about this later, you know, I look at the zoning ordinance, and I look to the subdivision regulations, I connected to Fox Hollow because that's what the subdivision regulations require, if I didn't, if I didn't, the first comment would say, "Connect to Fox Hollow", because I didn't meet the subdivision regulations, so, again...
I agree with you, I totally agree with you.
That's what I'm saying, but I just want to make sure that that's where it came from, and that's what's required from us as engineers and anybody else who's gonna develop this, so...
I, I hope nobody leaves here without the understanding that overcoming a zoned piece of property and make, trying to make it something else is very difficult, if not impossible, you know, but if I still feel like that, that had some of this, these conversations been obtained and, and met a month or two ago, I do think that maybe there would be a little more understanding of what's, what you're trying to do, so...
And, and that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, thank Jeremy, thank, thank you for, 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 for doing that, and I'm assuming you want to put it off for that, is that, is that correct?
Let me add, I, I notice your next meeting's November 18th, November 1st is this Monday, that only gives us about three weeks minimum, if there's any way we could put it off two months, it'd be great, I'm not trying to delay, I'm just trying to get the information and talk.
I, I think you better quit negotiating.
Yeah, I think 30 days is sufficient.
November 18th, we'll, we'll be fine. And, and the last point that I'd like to make is, I mean, the, being within, within the, the, the neighborhood, you know, constraints and stuff, there's also goodwill, and I think that's what a lot of these people are addressing, is the goodwill, you know, our neighbor relations, you know, you guys are gonna build the houses, and then you're gonna be gone, and then it's up to them to try to get along with the new neighbors coming in, and it's all about goodwill, you know, leave goodwill as you go to your next project, leave goodwill at this project, and then go to the next project, and then leave goodwill, because that's what they're more concerned about, I think, you know, I don't speak to them, but, you know, that's, that's what I gather, okay. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
There's Councilman Grimes is right back, right back there. Anything else, guys?
Do we need a motion, or we just table it?
No, they agreed to...
Y'all make a motion, or?
No, I mean, that's not a motion, that's a suggestion.
That's it?
That's it?
So, basically, it just didn't take it, it didn't make a motion. Right, man, it's gonna be noisy while they, you know, it's gonna be noisy while they leave.
That's your mind.
I have a question for you. Great. Brett, let's get to it, man.
Yeah, there's something on the table. Y'all leave quietly, please, we got agendas to take care of.
Sure, no problem.
Fred, let's go, let's...
Tommy called, I'll call it.
We'll tell Tommy.
Tell him, tell him.
Tommy, go ahead, let's get started.
Alright, the next item is presented by J. M. Garrett and son, on behalf of Joe Reed, it's a request for final approval of the Joe Reed Flat, number one, on the south side of John Brown Avenue.
If you could, if you could leave quietly, the meeting is still going on.
It's west of Walton Sea Hatch Drive, it's a R-60S District.
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Garrett, representing Joe Reed. The purpose of this is, is that Joe Reed has a large lot on the corner of John Brown, and his son-in-law has another one two lots down, there's an empty lot in between them, and they want to take that lot and give half to Joe Reed and half to his son-in-law, and that is, that's the purpose of this plat.
So, it's just taking three and making it two?
Yes, sir.
Vacant lot in between the middle, right, or vacant lot between the two lots that have buildings on them, or?
It'll be half to Joe and half to his son-in-law.
Alright. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
You didn't ask, because the audience hasn't, so...
The next item is by Lance Land Surveying, on behalf of...
Thank you.
Quick Trip Corporation, it's a request for final approval...
Tommy's reading already.
Quick Trip, number 7174, plat number one, on the southwest corner of West South Boulevard and I-65, it's a M1 district.
Good evening, commission, my name's Michael Burke, 952 Old Peachtree Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia.
Pull your, pull your mic, Phil, sir, please, sir.
What's that?
Speak, speak more into the mic.
My apologies.
Mr. Chairman, could... Mr. Chairman, could, could we just kinda go back? 'Cause we didn't ask if anybody was, uh, on the, on the last plat. We didn't ask, did anybody have, uh, an objection? Do you mind doing that just to clean us up?
Yeah, we, we didn't ask if there was any comments from the audience, I think, on the previous plat? Is there any comments? That was the Joe Reed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you doing that, that's.
I apologize. Go ahead.
We didn't get a vote, did we?
Good evening, commission. My name's Michael Burke, nine-five-two Old Peachtree Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia. And we are here, um, on behalf of Quick Trip Corporation and Alliance Surveying, um, requesting approval of final plat for sixteen, uh, little over sixteen acres of property on West South Boulevard up against I sixty-five. And the request here is to, um, combine three lots into one contiguous lot with the intent on future development on West South Boulevard on the front portion, and then the rest of the, uh, land against I sixty-five will remain relatively undeveloped with the potential of, um, having signage on I sixty-five. And I'm here to answer any questions, uh, of any of the.
I'm just curious, how wide is that area that makes this contiguous?
Uh, the connection between the two lots.
How wide is that?
Uh, I wanna say roughly, um, twenty-five or thirty feet wide.
Okay.
Be wide enough to have a access road there.
Any other comments from the commission?
So you're gonna develop that, uh, that, uh, west, that area that's west of the other portion? Is that what you're talking about?
So, yeah, the portion that's, uh, fronting on West South Boulevard is intended to be developed here in the very near future.
Yeah.
Any comments from the audience? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Next item is by Ufalla Surveying Company LLC, on behalf of Evergreen Forest Products, Inc.
Uh, hello, my name's Robert McGowan, Ufalla Surveying, and this is Daniel Hall.
Daniel Hall of Evergreen Forest Products.
Uh, we're just here to, they're trying to acquire three point three acres, uh, of property on Burnham Highway. At this present time, they have a lease from Down South Development, uh, which is the property just directly south of this property, and they're just trying to expand their operations, make a larger piece of property, uh, for their truck hub. Can I answer any questions y'all may have?
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
The next item is presented by Pilgrim Engineering, on behalf of Mr. City. It's a request for final approval of City Plat number one on the east side of Gunster Road at the east end of Gunster Place in a R one hundred district.
I'm Pep Pilgrim with Pilgrim Engineering. We're the owner of these three lots. It wants to build a house, but it's too big to go in the middle without encroaching on the lot line or setback, so we're just plating them all into one lot for one house.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
In a sec.
All in favor?
Thank you.
The next item is also by Pilgrim Engineering, so on behalf of Commercial Properties, Inc. Requesting final approval of LFORE Holdings LLC Plat number one on the east side of Eastern Boulevard, seven hundred feet north of Arbor Station Road in a B three district.
I'm Pep Pilgrim again with Pilgrim Engineering. This is a plat, uh, we're redoing for a proposed Dunkin' Donuts site. Uh, the names are just the owners or the people that are buying them.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the audience? Come forward.
My name is, my name is James Rex Ingram. I own the building next door at twenty fifteen Eastern Boulevard. And my concern is, is how close to my building it's gonna be, and how far off the road is that gonna be no further, you know, be, at least even with my building, or, or, or backwards, or in front of it.
Well, I don't, I, I really don't know how far back it sits. I can't tell you that. But it's, I mean, the setback, I don't know what the setback is in that zoning, but it's back enough, I think, for parking in the front, and on his side, it's, uh, I mean, they're actually on the property line or within two foot, but we've got, uh, two driveways between us and them, so we're not gonna be close to them, adjacent to them. Uh, and the front, off the top of my head, I don't remember what the DP looks like.
Yeah.
Well, there's an easement there on the north side.
I have concerns that there's no plans yet, you know, you don't, you don't know what you're gonna, gonna do with the building, how far off the road, or how far off from the, the building that's next to it. I have concerns about that. I'd like to see some more, uh, detailed plans than, than just a, a square drawing right there.
You know, this is a plat.
You know, I do have, I do have plans. I just don't know off the top of my head. There's a twenty-five or thirty-foot easement between me and him next door, so it's not gonna be any closer than that. And there's a driveway on that side of where the building, I mean, this is a Dunkin' Donuts site. It's got a drive-through, two on the right side looking from bypass, and one on the left side, at least probably two. So, we're gonna be way, 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 way far from him as he, compared to he is from us, I think. And the city has, I mean, I have plans, and they are in, uh, development's office being looked at.
So, so say that again. There, there's a, that easement is about twenty-five to thirty foot? Is that what you said?
I don't know, just pull the plat up and you'll see it. I don't remember. The power, the power and the gas and the water goes down that lot to the rear to Shakespeare Festival, so. Can you scroll down to where the plat is?
Yeah, but I can't read the numbers, any numbers on it.
Uh, that looks like, uh, that's probably twenty-five feet.
To the property line.
Water and sewer easement's fifteen, the other one's twenty. So it's thirty feet plus, you know, so we're at least that far off the, off the property. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Uh, the building, the building. Yes.
Can you talk into the mic? Do you talk into the mic?
My, my concern is, I don't want his, the Dunkin' Donuts building to be further, I mean, closer to the highway than my building and block the view of my building. It needs to be at least even or back beyond my building.
I, I, I think we're just trying to platter it right now, right, and we'll be back with, with plans in the future.
Mr. Chairman?
The setback is controlled by zoning.
Right.
And then there's at least twenty foot there. I don't know how, how far back it is. I don't remember how many parking places we got in the front. So, I, I can't tell you. And I understand what he's saying, but the setback's not governed by where his building is. It's governed by the zoning that's appropriate or how that lot's zoned.
Sir, do you know how far back your building is?
No, sir, I don't.
I, I, I think you were probably looking for a building design more than you were just the plat. Is that what you thought you were gonna see tonight?
Well, I was hoping I could, yeah, see exactly where he's gonna place the building.
Yeah.
And how far off of my building.
And, and that's not what this is. That's not what, what we're doing. No, was you, there will be another, uh, uh, he'll have another night here.
Mr. Horwick?
Yeah.
The development plan is properly before the land use already. I would be glad to get with the gentleman and, and let him see it.
Oh, okay.
Development plans do not come to the planning commission anymore.
Okay.
So, it is meeting the zoning guidelines, but I'll be glad to, if you, I'll give him his call after this, and, and, um, he can call me, he can call me, and we'll set up a meeting, and I, I'll let him see the development plans as they've been submitted.
Okay, okay. Is that, will that help you?
Our files aren't.
Call me, and I'll get, I'll get, I'll lay the plans out, and let you come by and see. We'll work it out, we can come by and see. Tomorrow's not a good day, but Mon, Monday'd be great. We have the ramifications of, of tonight. Okay, and, and I'll be glad to spread them out and explain to you.
Thank you. Any, any other comments?
Thank you for your.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
The next item is presented by Jeffcoat Engineers and Surveyors LLC, on behalf of Mrs. Jean Jones. Requesting final approval of Irwin Subdivision Commercial Plat number one, located on the south side of Mount Meggs Road, one hundred and seventy-one feet west of South Panama in a B two district.
Y'all know where it is, old post office building, adjacent lot. I'm Guthrie Jeffcoat with Jeffcoat Engineers and Surveyors, and we're wanting to plat this property. Uh, apparently, we don't have a plat on it, and we need to plat this property so that any alterations might take place to the existing buildings. It's being sold, and Ms. Jones, present owner, is selling it. And, uh, it's not total on, on what the use is going to be, except it will be according to the zoning. And, uh, right now, they're negotiating with, I think, a barbecue business. But anyhow, uh, we respectfully request your consideration and approval of this plat.
Do you happen to know what they're gonna do with the old post office?
Pardon?
Do you know what they're gonna do with the old post office?
No.
What, what, what's gonna happen on that lot, eh, Guthrie?
You know, the, the, certain amount of speculation with the purchase of this, so I can't answer too much, 'cause I don't know too, don't know too much.
I do understand.
I surveyed and platted and.
You did what you told.
That's about it. That's Frank Fox.
I just, I just, I look at the lot, and I see a fifty-four foot frontage and a, and a hundred and, almost a hundred and forty-nine foot. And the whole lot, I mean, I didn't, it just made sense to put them all together.
That twenty, that easement, if you're asking, on the back is already existing, so we gotta honor it. The Panama.
Yeah, but the frontage is what, yeah.
Any comments from the audience? Any other comments from the commission? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Next item is by Jeffcoat Engineers and Surveyors, on behalf of William Charles Gaiet, requesting rezon the north portion of a parcel of land on Upper Weetumpville Road, two hundred and fifty feet west of Clifford Laws Drive, containing approximately six-six acre, point six-six acres. It's from R sixty-five to a B two.
I don't know enough about the history of this property to tell you why there's two-thirds of an acre left off on the back when the front was rezoned to business, except that now then, there's a real need for the people that own this to put a couple of little warehouse buildings back there, and it, and to use it, and we need to rezon it. I mean, yeah, we need to rezon it to be two. It's now R sixty-five S. So, we need your approval of that.
So, so you're just trying to rezon it, and then I guess you come back and replat it after that? If, if, is that what you, is that where you headed?
If it's not already planted, I didn't even look and see.
Well, it looks like, but the, that back part doesn't look like it's planted into, and maybe it is, and I just don't. Maybe only half the lot is zoned.
Yeah, that's what'll happen, though, before he can be re, uh, getting building permits for those warehouses. Somebody's gonna require, some, down at Thomas Bunch is gonna require a plat, so. Got a cross, cross, he's crossing it one step at a time.
But let me, let me get it down in my, my little brain here. Basically, what you're trying to do is get both pieces zoned the same.
Yes.
And then you're gonna come back and platter.
Right, if one, one owner now, and he wants to get it all uniformly, the same zoning.
Okay, all right.
Um, I'd like to know if the backside of these storage facilities is gonna be, have any openings in it, windows or doors?
The backside, backside of what?
Of the storage facility.
I don't know anything about that.
And Mr. Gaiet knows, I bet you.
Sir?
Let Mr. Gaiet answer that.
Come on, Mr. Gaiet.
Hello, I'm, I'm Bill Gaiet, owner of Gaiet Roofing and Construction. And, uh, we do have plans to build, or hope to build, two, uh, storage buildings. Uh, both would be seventy-five feet by, um, by twenty-five feet, or eighteen hundred and seventy-five feet each. As far as the openings are concerned, there would be, uh, four, uh, bay openings, enough to drive a vehicle into facing the inside of the property there, and then one walk-through door. The backside that, um, that, uh, adjoins Crown Nursing Home would just be solid, uh, there'd no openings there. Uh, all of the steel is from Alabama Steel. We have architects, uh, have helped us put together the plans. And, and we didn't even realize we had the issue until, uh, we got ready to build and found out that the back half of the, uh, of the lot has been zoned residential for the last, uh, ever how many years, even though the property's been used commercially for probably forty or fifty years. So, it was just kind of a glitch, uh, Mr. Center pointed it out to us, and that's why we're here tonight.
Any other comments from the audience? Any other comments from the commission? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is presented by Luis Del Alba Hernandez, requesting a rezon one lot on the south side of Buckingham Drive, five hundred feet east of Norman Bridge Road, from O one to R seventy-five S.
Nobody here.
Come up a little closer to the mic.
She's the one by the lawn, and just coming in terms of her, because she can speak English. So, just coming in terms of her. She wanna change it from, uh, it's a, what is it, a commercial?
Office.
Yes, to residential. And we want to put a major home. It's what we asking for.
That'd be an improvement.
So, this is requesting a zone one. It's located on the south side of Birmingham Drive, approximately five hundred feet for east, Norman. Approximately five hundred feet for east of Norman Bridge Road from an O dash one office, zoning district two, and R seventy-five is a single-family residential zoning district. The remark, they intend to use this property as a single-family residential use. The adjacent property, R seventy-five is a single-family residential to the east M dash one. Like industrial zoning to the southern west. O dash one office on our, the ambition of Montgomery, twenty forty compressor plan recommended residential, medium intensity.
What kind of house did you say was gonna be on this lot?
Uh, we trying to put a modular home, not used to, uh, double Y, it's a, you know, with a foundation.
Foundation.
Yes, it's a house, pretty much.
Yes, not, not local.
This zoning won't, this zoning will, it will allow modular, will not allow a mobile home.
Good, thank you, Tom.
It, it needs to be a, a modular building, like you said.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, is what we, what we looking for. We already found one. Also, I'm a driver for, uh, I do all kind of jobs, and it's what we do. And it's what we're looking to put there, is a modular home.
Not a trailer, but a modular home.
Yes, sir.
They were cutting down some big trees the other day when I was out there.
Any, any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the audience?
My name is Arnold Mitchell, represent Sepp Johnson.
Yeah, come up to the microphone.
Arnold Mitchell, represent Sepp Johnson Neighborhood. Uh, he mentioned that he have a modular home. Does he have a picture of that particular, uh, structure that he's gonna put there? Do you have a picture of it?
If I can, can, the photos de, de la casa. We can provide, I mean.
Yeah, it, it, I think your question is, he's not allowed to put a mobile home or a trailer.
It's a modular home, which is mobile home, different, single Y, double Y. Modular home is different, it's like a house.
Have you already bought the modular home?
Already, already got the lino, also already had the timber down. So, we just looking to finish cleaning out the next couple, two weeks, and we go from there.
Any other comments?
You did say, you did say that was on a foundation, did you not? Did you say that this modular home you were putting on a foundation?
We will, concrete.
Any other comments from the audience? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, motion passed.
Next item is by Doug Isaacson on behalf of the Isaacson Family Enterprises LLC.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, you good.
Request to rezone the east portion of the parcel on the northwest, northeast corner of Ray Thorington Road and Wisdom Wood Road. Approximately three point eight-five acres from O one to B two Q.
I thought there'd be a crowd here for this.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Doug Isaacson, and we're requesting to, uh, make it, uh, that parcel one zoning rather than two. And move office to, uh, B two.
I'm confused. Number eleven. Oh, I'm sorry.
Any comments from the commission?
William Julian from the, the Melrose Homeowners Association. Uh, we were made aware of this, uh, only a few homes were made aware of this over the last month or so. We have not had time to, uh, go through and have a conversation with the gentleman about what he's plans to do. We have, uh, concerns about the health and safety of putting a storage unit behind, uh, a neighborhood with multiple families and single families. As well as, um, lighting issues and, um, sanitary issues with having a storage unit there. So, we would ask to at least extend this to next month, so we can meet with the member and discuss the issues that we have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm on the board of, uh, directors at Melrose also, and we all, like Will said, we weren't able to, to get, uh, a written petition, but the entire board is against it, and we just need a little more time so we can, um, get a formal petition. Uh, the main issue is we would, we would prefer it to be zoned for office. Um, when you have a storage unit, people could be entering at all types of night, and we have residential houses right there. If it's office zone, you know, we can expect eight to five and stuff like that, so rezoning it for commercial, even though it's for storage, just, um, feels like, um, it would be an issue for the entire Melrose community.
Hi, my name is Dr. Ward Harris. Um, I actually live exactly behind the line there. Um, I'm definitely opposed. Um, me and a lot of the other families that live there have small children. My husband and I, uh, work really hard to be able to afford this community, um, to work here. Our children, along with Will's children and stuff, play at night in our yard. Sometime, we've kind of brought back that old feel of being safe, um, in our homes where our kids can play at night. Um, we sometimes accidentally leave our doors open, um, at night. Um, and I don't want that ripped away from myself or my neighbors, um, just because something turns into commercial and you can have loud music and all this thing. Right now, we just have this nostalgia, um, in our home that we've worked so hard to be able to bring, um, to our families when we all know we live in a community now where you, you kind of always don't have that. I don't want that safe, warm, fuzzy feeling taken away from myself or my children. Um, and so I hope that you all will please consider keeping it a office space. Thank you.
Good evening to you guys. Uh, I live right, the, in front of the storage unit.
Can, can you give us your name for the record?
Claudia Willis. And me and my husband write this on the parcel where they wanna build it. So, I would have really concerns, just me and my husband, we love the quietness of the neighborhood. And if they build a storage unit, they're gonna have lights shining in their yard, and I'm just gonna not feel secure no more. And I hope they're not gonna build it. Thank you.
I'm Dennis Leatherwood. I live down Wisdom Wood Road. I have been there for forty years. Um, we, I would like to say that we generally, the neighbors, um, approve of, of what we see so far. Uh, with this, we feel like this is a better alternative than some things we could have down Wisdom Wood Road. Uh, we travel there every day, the family's down, so our main concern, living down the road, is that the aesthetics of the building and the landscaping, uh, be appropriate so that we don't drive down and see things that we don't want to see with our kids and parking lots with cars and, um, RVs and boats and all that stuff down there, but generally we approve. Now, if I would indulge you just a little bit, I would, I've been, I have seen development go down that road since Deer Creek was the first one. Deer Creek, uh, um, put a berm, a, a fence, and landscaping down Wisdom Wood Road. It's been very effective for the twenty years it's been down there. With one exception, the, the neighbors have cleared the vegetation and actually rounded up one area of the fence, and we have no, no recourse except to file suit, civil suit against that, so we, we do have that. Huntington Ridge was built right behind my house. I had a pond there. They assured be, there would be no impact on my property. They put a storm drain down the back of my pond and effectively drained my pond and cut the trees off the back. Uh, I eventually had to fill in my pond because it became worthless. I've seen Melrose built, right now, if you look at the plat on Melrose, you will see that they promised a berm, a fence, and vegetation like Deer Creek. As of right now, they have put all, all except a fence there on one of those lots. And it has been that way and has not been completed. I assume it's not gonna be completed. I fought that every way I can, but again, I've been advised that I, if I don't like it, I can file suit against the owner. Uh, Stone Martin, uh, basically abandoned me and that, and put finishing that off. They said it was a loner's, the owner's responsibility for that fence. The, the dentist at the end of the road promised us to put bushes and vegetation and landscape, that area. He planted about three bushes and they died within two years, and so now drive by his trash can every day. So, I would appeal to you to follow through after the promises have been made, so that we get what we asked for. Mr. Pilgreen, when he drew up Melrose, was very kind, and we agreed to everything, but they have not followed through. And so we live with that today. The only, I asked the city about, uh, the following through, and they said, well, the only thing that they, they could do was, was look at the buildings themselves and not the lots. And if the houses were, were livable, uh, then they, they were done. So, I would appeal to you that. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, are you for it, I guess that?
Thank you, that's.
I'm, I'm generally agreeable with this, with this, um, motion that they have today, and I indulge you with a little bit of history there, but the residents down Wisdom Wood Road generally agree with what they're doing. And we would, we would like to see, obviously, the plan and what their landscaping plan is for Wisdom Wood Road as that comes up. And we will be back when that comes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the pop, the property that they're trying to rezone is the Q one. So, his house is down the road, Melrose, everything that they're trying to rezone is behind several lots in our neighborhood. So, it, it affects us differently than, if it was down the road from our neighborhood, we, we'd be for it too. But since it's right behind several lots, that's the main concern.
Right, thank you. Uh, and I would ask, uh, do you have plans to, to respond to that as far as landscape buffers and? Okay, I, I thought we had everybody to.
The other concern that we have is, it's just a portion of the seven point five acres, or seven point whatever, seven point two acres. We don't know what they wanted to do with the other part, so if they're gonna rezone this to commercial for this storage unit, what are they gonna do for the next lot, and then how's that gonna negatively affect our safety of our, our families? As well as the, uh, value of our homes? Those are some of the larger concerns that we have, because most, uh, storage units are twenty-four seven, which means that you're gonna have people coming in twenty-four seven, which can bring crime and bring in, uh, issues. And we have no guarantee that they're gonna do anything about it. Not all those homes have fences on the back of it as well, so that's our concern.
Alright, thank you.
Are you, are y'all gonna be open twenty-four seven? Are y'all gonna have different times that you can't?
Yeah, right. So, on, on the issue of operating hours, uh, we're gonna have staff, first of all, Wells Robinson, that's who I am. Um, we're gonna have, it's a, it's gonna be a manned facility, so there's gonna be actual staff there working the facilities, it's not a virtual.
Is it live on, are they living?
No, 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 so they won't live there. It'll, it'll be a, a.
It's an office that, that they're over there during the, during the business hours?
Yes, yes, sir. There'll be an office on the, the front addressing, most likely Ray Thorington, that would be pretty standard.
Will the tenants have access to the storage units twenty-four seven?
You know, that's something we're entirely up to negotiating. I mean, that, that, that's, that's no issue for us. I would like to kind of address a lot of the things that were said, though I think that's fair to the commission to, to hear from, you know, the development side. Um, when we put the property under contract, you know, we reached out to Melrose first. That was the very first phone call we made, before we even made a petition. Yeah, I mean, I was respectful. You know, there are, it's, what we understand is that the neighbors are going to be taking over the homeowners association November first, is the latest information that I've got. The homeowners association, I guess, as it exists tonight, um, is still controlled by the development company. They have a third party that does all of that for them. So, you know, we called them immediately when we put the property under contract to inform them of that fact, what we're intending for the use to be. Had a probably hour and a half conversation right away to say, trying to be good neighbors, we wanna have conversations, we'll go at your pace. If you want us to meet, we'll be happy to do that. Um, I think Mr. Leatherwood has pretty much represented what the feeling is of the neighbors on Wisdom Wood is behind us. Um, we, frankly, didn't hear anything from Melrose, um, until about, I guess, a week or so ago, and they said, hey, we're basically departing. The residents are about to take over. Do you want us to share your information? Said, please do, we'd love to talk to them. We've done the same thing with Deer Creek. Reached out to them, spoke to their executive director, told them what we were doing, shared all of our information, offered to meet with them on their terms, however they would like to do it, whenever and however much, however long. They're not here. Uh, there, there's been no, I guess, concern expressed from them. We've reached out to, you know, Thorington Trace. We've basically tried to find every neighbor that we have and have reached out to them extremely proactively. Probably the reason, I'm not gonna speak for them too much, that Mr. Leatherwood gave the opinion he gave is, we've met with them twice on the property at their request, that they felt like they wanted to get better acquainted with what we were trying to do, because, you know, they share eight hundred feet of their road with us, and so they've given us their input on things that they wanted to see. And he can, you know, speak for it, but that's already been incorporated into what we're trying to do for the layout. It's going to be fenced, secure. The lighting requirements under the B two Q don't allow us to put lighting towards the neighborhood anyway, that's restricted. Um, and we're asking to continue that across the whole parcel, so we're not changing those restrictions. And, you know, the front half is B two already, and I think that's because there was a two thousand eight petition to develop the property, um, with strip, uh, off, uh, sorry, retail on the front half and, I think, four office buildings on the back half. So, you know, narrowly tailoring the zoning, I think that's how you got a split zone on one parcel. Um, that obviously didn't come to fruition, and so, you know, we've now closed on the property and all we're asking to do is unify the zoning. We'll keep all the restrictions from the B two. Um, you know, I, I think it would be helpful for us to have a conversation with these folks, but I mean, I think we've, I think you can hear it from the goodwill perspective. We've tried very hard to reach out to everybody, and the conversation's not over tonight. So, you know, we've told all of them, we'll share our, you know, civil plans, our architectural plans, and we'll ask for input, because we would rather know the problems early and address them than, than have a blowout. So, you know, what I guess I would recommend is that, you know, in all fairness, we've been trying to reach out to everybody and, and have these conversations that we frankly be allowed to continue, and also with the condition that we speak with these folks, which we're happy to do. We'll meet in their home, we'll meet on the property, we'll meet however they want, but, you know, I can tell you, we found an eight-foot hole on the property that was open on our due diligence and had it filled in. due diligence and had it filled in, just out of safety for children or animals or whatever. So, you know, I think they're gonna find we're gonna be a pretty good neighbor, and I think, I think we have the history of that community, so that's, that's where we're coming from. I don't know if I've addressed every question, but...
Well, well, now that you've got some people here and you can have a meeting, would you like to have the meeting and then come back next month?
I mean, we're, I mean, we had a meeting earlier this afternoon with one of the neighbors, I mean, we're happy to do that at any time.
Well, well, the answer is yes and no. Do you want to have the meeting with them and then come back next month?
I mean, if, 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 I mean, if, if that's the condition, yes, yes, we're, we'll do that.
It's not a condition, I mean, it's just a simple, you know...
No, we, we want to meet, we'll meet with them right now, I mean, we're, and continue that, I mean...
Yeah, but, yeah, but we're not gonna wait around for the meeting, so, so I'm just saying, do, I mean, it's a simple question. Do you want to meet with them?
Yes.
And then come back and we decide next month? And, and you all come to some kind of agreement or some kind of, you know, where everybody's happy?
Sure, yeah, we're, I mean, we're, we're happy to do that.
Okay, then we'll continue it to next month.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Just like Mr. Hardwood said, now, don't, you know, quit while you're ahead.
Oh, no, I believe that you reached out to us just to let you guys know the HOE is being transferred from the builder to the homeowners. And from our experience with Regency, there was not a lot of communication, which is why we're searching for another property manager, so I believe you when you said that. But we did not find out until we got the letters in the mail, and it was only like the adjoining lots that got the letters in the mail, so up until this point, we did not know. So I, I believe you, but if you allow us the time, I think it would be a lot smoother, so...
Yeah, can I say one more thing, just, I think it's important for the record?
And it's, and, and may I say, it's up to you guys to notify the rest of, the rest of the homeowners or whatever, because this is the meeting, and so if they're not there, you know, it's just, so, so it's up to you guys to notify the rest of the neighborhoods, the people that live in, in the area, whatever. I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna say is that, I, I think this is true for everybody around us, we actually notified them of this hearing before it signs went up or anything, when we knew we were coming. So I mean, I, just, just to, you know, let you hear that on the record, I mean, that's been the spirit we've approached everybody on this, and, you know, so, we'll, we'll do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is presented by Thoy Duan and Steve Tran. Requesting to rezone one parcel located on the southeast corner of Ann Street, Highland Avenue from R60S to a B2.
Hi, my name is Steve Tran, and my wife is Tweedong.
Hi, my name is Tweedong.
Yeah, we want to come here to for a rezone, for commercial business, small one.
What will the business be?
Uh, we try to plan, you know, like, open a nail shop, small nail shop, or a small restaurant on the corner, you know, like food to go, you know?
What to go? What did you say, to go?
Food to go.
Food to go.
Yeah, like restaurant, small one.
Any comments from the commission?
I have one. If you're gonna approve this rezoning, it needs, you need to queue it, so there's no billboard there.
Say that again, Tommy.
If you're gonna consider approving this, which is probably before you to do, I would suggest you to restrict it where it cannot host a billboard.
No, no billboard.
No billboard, okay. Um, Tommy, just, just for my edification, there was some, um, weren't there some provisions in the approval of all that property there that Buddy McClen did on the, on that, on that, both sides of the street? Weren't there some, several things that were in each one of those, uh, in the, in the overall?
There was the west side of Ann, and it didn't, did not include this property.
And why was it exempt?
The gentleman that, it was the control of the property at the time held out and didn't, didn't participate.
And that's why it's residential?
Yes, sir.
I got you.
And also, and this is on me, I've contacted, for several years, this property's sat dormant because of the accessibility.
Yes.
And the traffic engineering department determined several years ago that the only thing, because of the intersection and the way it lays out, the only thing that's gonna be allowed is a right-in off of Ann and a right-out onto Highland Avenue. So that, that may end up being an issue for developing it.
Yeah. Now, now, that's already in place?
That's, that, that was determined by the traffic engineering department several years ago. This, this property has been visited several times before getting to, to this point.
So, so you would want us to queue that into it also?
I just, I, I just wanted to be part of the record that right-in off of Ann and right on to Highland, right out on to Highland, maybe there's a possibility they could reach out to O'Reilly's and try to do some kind of cross-access or something, but I just wanted to be part of the record, and, and I failed to get it in the agenda.
Ain't, ain't traffic engineers saying that access to Highland is denied? They don't, I mean, that's what I'm reading right here.
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm reading here, well, traffic engineers saying access to Highland Avenue is denied.
I believe, I believe it's, I believe they would give them a right-out, but it would have to be looked at even closer, yes, sir.
Well, this paperwork says right-in, right-out on Ann Street, didn't say Highland Avenue.
And I just said, Mr. Reeves, that's on me. That's why I'm making it part of the record. Right-in, off of Ann, and right on to Highland is what the traffic engineering department told me.
But sir, you, you mentioned food to go, you gonna have a drive-through?
I really don't know, this, my first time bought this property, and we tried to plan to open a small one for families, you know?
It's not good access for a drive-through.
So we don't have...
It's not good access, period.
No, true, especially for a drive-through.
I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm just, no, I'm, I'm kind of confused.
I have a question, so did you say a nail salon and a restaurant?
Yes, or a nail shop.
A nail shop and a restaurant?
Yes, ma'am, not a big one, just like 2,000 square feet, or 25 square feet, you know, 2,500 square feet.
Have y'all bought the property already? Do y'all own this property right now, or are you in the process of trying to buy it?
Yes, sir, we bought it, sir.
You've already paid for it?
Yes, sir.
You've already got it in your name?
Yes, sir.
And you hadn't got it zoned? Bless your heart.
Mr. Tran, do you understand what he said about the sign?
For the sign in the front of the property?
No, no billboard, no...
The billboard, I saw they have a two billboard over there.
Yeah, not, not allowed to have a billboard.
I didn't put it in there, yeah. I didn't put any billboard in there.
No, he, he, he's saying that you're not allowed to put a billboard there?
Oh, I, I understand, sir. As long as I have put my name on the building, that's all right, it's good to go.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, um... Y'all, I, I just, my heart goes out to them, that, um, just the, the situation, you know, you own it, but it wasn't, it just wasn't zoned, and, and, and I think that's probably not their fault, that was probably, somebody probably just didn't tell them about what, what the process. Y'all, this, this one is, is gonna have to be a hard decision to make, so, so, I don't know that I, I, I don't know. I wouldn't want to be in that position.
I, well, I, I think it should be commercial based on what's around it, whether it's a good commercial spot or not.
That's another decision. So what you're saying is, buddy, keep the thing separated because of the zoning is one thing, what goes there can be something else, you'll see that again. Is that what you're really kind of saying, really? Yeah, yeah. Oh, Lord, that in and out, though, right-in, right-out, it's... All right, okay, all right.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
That's second.
All in favor? Opposed?
That passes it though, doesn't it?
Yes, all right, motion passed.
That's how...
Thank you, sir, thank you, Thomas, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one question. They're saying the next meeting's on the 18th of November. Last year, we moved to the second, third, and left Board of Adjustments on the third, third. Are y'all changing that this year?
I think because of where Veterans Day lays, we had to move it even differently this year. I think Veterans Day falls on a Thursday, which would have been one of the Thursdays we normally would have been on, which is, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it's Veterans Day that messed it up this year.
So when's the Board of Adjustments meeting?
Sir?
When's the Board of Adjustments meeting?
Next Thursday, November 4th.
What's going on on the 11th?
Sir?
On the 11th, is it?
Meeting adjourned.
It's a holiday, it's Veterans Day.